Members, I congratulate the delegation including Senators Session, Senator Shelby, and Representative Byrne. We appreciate their support of our Tiger grant application, and we were able to update them on all the latest activities that we have going on in Mobile. While in DC, we also participated in a convention recruiting trip organized by Visit Mobile. The participants included Jerry Carl, Councilman John Williams, Roger Weiner from the Mobile Airport Authority, Wiley Blankenship from the Coastal Alabama Partnership, as well as Al Hudson and the members of his team. We attended the American Society Executive Springtime Trade Show, which is one of the convention's premier events. We had an opportunity to explain Visit Mobile and let them know that we are born to celebrate. It was very rewarding to be there, to listen to these convention ears talk about how they place conventions and what they look for, and I think that we're on the pathway to opening more eyes, making people realize that we are a destination where they need to send their conventions. So I was grateful to have the opportunity to participate in that. Also while we were there, we went to the Airbus, Airbus's new headquarters in DC. And in this headquarters, they have an experience center. And the experience center shows off all of the technology and some of the airplanes and some of its video, but it's very, very high-tech display. They're talking about building something similar here in Mobile. One of the things I happened to notice on the wall was a glider. It wasn't your typical glider. This glider is made to go to 90,000 feet. And you ask, "How does a glider get to 90,000 feet?" And they say, "It gets in the ozone hole and rides the air currents up." They never did explain how it came back down.
Yeah.
You know, and they didn't, and this is an experimental aircraft. I don't think they've quite gotten to the 90,000-feet yet, but that's, that's the objective, to do that. Anyway, Airbus does so many more things than what they're doing here in Mobile, and we hope that there's an opportunity to do additional things in Mobile than what they're presently doing. Today, on the agenda, President Gregory pointed out that there are a couple of resurfacing contracts specifically for Pleasant Valley Road and O'Shea Road. The proposal awards a $1.5 million contract to John G. Walton Construction for the construction of the work, and $24,000 contract to Southern Earth Sciences for the geotechnical services. Now, this again is just an opportunity for the citizens to start witnessing that we're actually putting pavement on the ground and new concrete where our sidewalks need repairing and so forth. Just very gratifying to be part of that also. The Economic Development Agreement with Bel Air Mall is a resolution on the agenda today. The project will include a minimum of $25,000 in capital improvements and related project costs at the site, which has been invested by the developer. A warrant to provide incentives to and to reimburse the developer for capital expenditures and project costs will be issued to the developer. The goal is to stimulate significant capital investment. At least 80% of the businesses coming to Bel Air will be the new-to-Mobile, already exist at Bel Air, or opening additional stores in Mobile. All incentives are tied to the overall growth and the success of this project. If you're wondering why to do something like this, I think there are other cities around this nation. If you go and look at the impact that an empty mall has on that city, becoming a blighted property, part of the reason that we invest in this, we do not want a blighted mall in the middle of our city, and we're grateful to have the Ralphs Company to come in and make this investment in Bel Air Mall. Tomorrow is the National Day of Prayer, excuse me, Thursday is the National Day of Prayer. In his book, Living as Salt and Light, Derek Prince emphatically says it is a great responsibility for us to pray for good government. And referencing 1 Timothy 2:1-4, he points out that we are to pray for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead quiet and peaceable lives in our godliness and reverence. If we pray every day for good government, I'm convinced we'll start seeing our city, state, and national governments respond in unexplainable ways. For those who have followed the golfing circuit, one of Mobile's own, Bobby White, who recently graduated last couple of years from the University of Alabama, placed fourth in the Zurich Classic of New Orleans this weekend. That's the first time he's broken into the leadership in the finishing of any major tournament. He's the son of Cliff and Robin White, and I know they're very proud of him, as are all of our golfers that follow our young golfers in the city. At this time, I would ask Nancy Hudson to please come to the podium to speak about Operation Lifesaver and talk about what they're doing regarding railroad crossing safety.
Good morning. Thank you so much, Mayor Stimson and the council, for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I am Nancy Hudson. You asked for an address, 9329 Miller Road, Warrior, Alabama. I am the executive director for Alabama Operation Lifesaver. We're a nonprofit public education program that is dedicated to reducing death and injury at railroad crossings and along railroad property. While we have seen significant reductions in crashes and injuries since we were formed in 1976, Alabama continues to rank very high in the nation for the number of vehicle train collisions. The Federal Railroad Administration recently released their 2013 preliminary statistics, and they show that Alabama had nine crashes resulting in five fatalities and 34 injuries. These statistics place Alabama as number six in the nation for the number of crashes and number 14 in the nation for the number of fatalities. To celebrate our 40-year anniversary of being in Alabama, sharing our safety message, we're taking the rail safety message on the road. We're going to 40 cities around the state, and we want to remind everyone of our safety message, which is, "When you see tracks, we want you to think train." This morning, I was invited to speak to some of your employees and share the safety message. Some of the things we talked about were looking for the signs that let you know that you are approaching a railroad crossing, to remind drivers that we are required to yield the right-of-way to the train, and that an average 100-car freight train, 55 miles an hour, needs at least one mile to stop. We can stop, so can the train, but not nearly as quickly as we can. Another part of the 40-city tour is to strengthen our partnership with Mobile, not just by offering presentations to your city employees, but to your schools, your civic groups, and your industry, and to all Mobile citizens. But this rail safety tour would not be possible without the dedicated partners that really believe in the Operation Lifesaver mission. They all want to save lives. So I have to give special thanks today to the Alabama Department of Transportation and all of Alabama's railroads, which are represented today with Elizabeth Lawler from Norfolk Southern and, I think I lost him, Jaws Perry with the Genesee in Wyoming Railroad. They completely support me as the director, and they support the Operation Lifesaver program. So again, thank you, Mayor Stimson, and the city of Mobile for participating in our 40-city rail safety tour. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Richardson?
I have a comment to make.
Yes, sir.
Good to hear from you, good to see you. It was an accident between a train and automobile last week in Trinity Gardens. I went out to take a look. It's two tracks running across Main Street. Two different tracks. And what I find to be true, in the low-to-moderate income neighborhoods all over the city, they don't have stop signs at the track. You go to other neighborhoods, they got a big old stop sign, S-T-O-P, where the motorists are reminding it to stop at the track. But when you get to pull people, like they want them to keep going, there are no signs. I think the railroad company ought to be obligated, ought to be required, they're not going to put no signals up, they're not going to put the arm down. At least, they can put a stop sign at the track. I saw, and neither one of those tracks, I rode around and looked at other tracks, no stop sign.
Okay, I thank you very much for your comments. I can tell you that the installation of stop signs is sometimes the responsibility of the jurisdiction, and railroad companies are required at every crossing to install the cross buck, the X-shaped sign that says railroad crossing. Legally, when we see that sign, we are required to yield the right-of-way to the train. Every crossing will have that cross buck if it's a public crossing. But the stop signs are truly usually up to the jurisdiction, and the cross buck is the railroad's only responsibility to actually mark a crossing. But I can tell you for sure, Alabama Operation Lifesaver doesn't want anybody to get hurt or killed. I can also guarantee you that the railroads don't want that either. And if you would like to arrange presentations in those communities, at gatherings where Operation Lifesaver can come in and offer safety presentations, all you got to do is call me.
I'll give, can you give the city clerk your card?
Yes.
Because I have a meeting coming up in June that I would like for you to present.
I will be more than happy to, sir. Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it.
Can I just mention something?
Sure, go ahead.
We each have district newsletters that we send out, and some weekly, some bi-monthly, but if you have any kind of educational JPG that talks about what that sign represents, or just what you do, or how people can contact you, if you could get that to our clerk's office, I'd love to put that in our newsletters.
That's great, I can take care of that. Thank you very much, that's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to give you the March financial report, but then also spend a few minutes, if you will, on hitting the highlights in the comprehensive annual financial report that was delivered last week. March was a difficult month for revenues. We, sales taxes into all funds were actually down when compared with March from 2015. Not really sure why, we don't, don't see a trend yet, but it is something to watch over the next couple of months. For the year-to-date, though, the first six months, we're up about 2.5 million over the same period last year. So the, the year-to-date looks good. This is about 2.7%. Compared to budget for sales taxes for this point in the year, we're up only about 240,000, so basically flat. In other words, we budgeted about a 3% increase in sales taxes from 2015 to 2016, and that's being achieved. But we're not seeing a trend up in taxes throughout the year over last year, and so we're going to be cautious about what we predict for 2017 as we enter the budget process. Throughout one-half of the fiscal year, each operational department has spent less than one-half of their budget, which is good. Citywide, departmental expenditures are about 43.6% of the year's budget, so we're holding, holding our own on departmental expenses. And maybe going forward, that's where improvements in, in delivery to the citizens is going to take place, and continued downward trend in, in expenditures, as opposed to hoping for large increases in revenue. The CAFR was issued electronically last week, and it's now on the website, and you will be getting bound copies as soon as they are printed, and those will be hand-delivered. The highlights are really a celebration of the fiscal responsibility that the city council and the mayor have shown since your election. Those chickens are coming home to roost, I believe. The city in 2015 experienced a $23.1 million operating surplus, which was higher than last year, which was pretty outstanding. The majority of this was budgeted, of course, you know, some of it went to complete the funding of the reserve account that we've talked about, one month of operating revenue in the general fund, and $7.6 million was budgeted into capital. So the city's general fund balance has improved markedly, but as important, the city has not incurred any new debt over the last two and a half years. No long-term debt, no short-term debt. When you were elected to this term, the long-term indebtedness of the city was $296 million, which was above average. It wasn't in the danger zone, but it was high for a city our size. Today, that has fallen by more than 30 million, it'll have fallen by more than 40 million by the end of the year. And so that combined with the increase in our reserves is, is a bright spot for Mobile. We're not where we need to be, but we are certainly getting to where we need to be. At the same time, the city's unfunded liabilities are falling due to your efforts in dealing with the, with healthcare reform. An unfunded liability for post-employment healthcare, which was at 340, excuse me, 304 million when you took office, is now less than 200 million. So it's fallen by 100 million, actually 112 million. The unfunded liabilities in the two pension plans, the police and fire pension fund and the RSA pension fund, have fallen. As you know, the police and fire pension fund's unfunded liability is falling through no real efforts of our own. We're on a 30-year amortization, statutory amortization of, of that liability. But with RSA's actions and the city engaging positively with their actions of a couple of years ago, the RSA unfunded liability is falling. We were at 55 million a year ago, we're at 51 today. So things appear to be, you know, heading in the right direction from a net worth, if you will, standpoint, as well as an operational income standpoint. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
That's great, thank you, Paul. Any questions, comments? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on September 9th, September 10th, September 11th in Spanish Plaza Park. May 14th on Black Lawn Street. May 14th on, I'm sorry, we want to hold that one over. May, July 4th on Texas Street at the James Seals Recreation Center, and May 28th on Victoria Place.
So move. Settle.
Discussion? The one on Victoria Place South, that of course is in District 7, and we are changing that to 10:30 PM?
District 2.
No, it's actually in District 7.
District 7.
Yeah. All right. Any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have a request for a wave of the noise ordinance on May 14th on West Gammon Street, Gammon Circles, or Frye Park.
Move to layoff for one week.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Public hearings today, it's a public hearing to determine if the structures at 507 Dolphin Island Parkway, 665 Patton Avenue are public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this, please come to the podium. All right, public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Herb Wagner.
Come on, man. Not here?
Good morning, Mayor Stimson, city councilmen, staff, fellow Mobile citizens, special guests and visitors. I, James L. Jackson of 224 Garrison Avenue, Pritchett, Alabama, and 111 Columbia Street, Mobile, Alabama. I am an entrepreneur, I'm also a community activist, and associate of the New Black Panther Party. I would like to express my concerns about the current issues of the mobile transit bus system planning to cut off some of the bus routes and time schedules due to cutbacks in their budget. In my factual opinion, I believe this would be a catastrophic decision, making it a life- In my factual opinion, I believe this would be a catastrophic decision, making it a life or death situation for many in our community. Reason being because many of our Mobile County middle-class borderline impoverished or below the poverty line citizens depend on the transportation of the way transit daily. A lot of people in our poor city do not have any other way to get from point A to B. With this drastic, drastic increase of prices in the economy and the minimum wage remaining the same for nearly a decade, it's very hard for many people to purchase a reliable vehicle, whether it be the children needing the bus service to get to school to obtain a decent education, a diabetic patient needing to get to their diabetes appointment, or a hard-working man or woman who cannot depend on anyone for transportation but depend to get to work every day on time in order to place food on their family's table and keep the utilities on legally. If the cutbacks caused the way transit to cut out some of the routes and the time schedules, it will cause, it would possibly cause some of the children in Mobile, Pritchett, to miss out on going to school, more, more sick and elderly people passing away because they couldn't get to their prescriptions or make it to their doctor's appointment, or even some losing their jobs, which as society, we encourage to have to survive on a daily basis. The first human nature of law is self-preservation, meaning jobless, discouraged citizens may resort to criminal activity as the only other option to provide for his or her family. Jobs are not really that easy to come by in our area. Pictures sales of your loved ones in their shoes. Everybody in our city and county does not have the luxury of afford in taxi or Uber services to get a ride to their daily primary destinations. With that being said, all I ask for you this morning is to please find it in your hearts to help and support Mobile County's most vulnerable senses, citizens who depend on the current regularly operated services of the Mobile Transit Way Bus System. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much for coming down.
Okay.
Mario Yao, Senior. I mean, you just have five minutes.
Good morning, Councilman. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Everyone in the audience. Mario Yao, 1860 Red Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36610. I had spoken with Councilman Manzi about the Plateau Cemetery. I received a letter on it. So basically now, only thing with that issue I'm trying to see is there, is the SRO being taken care of. If they actually start doing work on the cemetery where it's flooding, there are actually grave sites that are underwater. A lot of the, on the side that's closer to the Cochrane Bridge, right away is overgrown or whatever. Myself along with other constituents, because I was the former constable in that district, was really, you know what I'm saying, acting about, asking about what could be done. We have this letter that was sent to me about it being addressed or whatever, but we're trying to find out when will it actually be done, or they will see some improvement on the Plateau Cemetery.
So you're actually looking for a timeline of when, when work would start?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to turn to Mr. Manzi, since you have been working with the gentleman. Do you have that in your files?
I, I don't. I did receive the letter from my office. We have sent that in the form of an executive request to the administration. So I would have to, at this point, it's over in the administration's hands to see what commentary they might offer relative to a timeline.
Yes. Did, did the letter just tell you that we have put in the request?
Yes, ma'am. I have the actual SRO.
So it actually has what, what the work should be done?
Yes, ma'am.
Does it have like a timeline within 190 days or something like that?
It doesn't have a timeline. It's just saying that the status is assigned.
The status is assigned. So, so they're still looking at it is what it would appear to me. And without our executive director here, it's hard for me to tell you exactly what it is, but we'll check on that for you, Mr. Manzi, if you would.
I will. I'll, I'll get, if you all can relay that information to me, I'll give you a call and give you an update.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
My other issue that I have is in the, the corner of Arlington and Anne Street. I have a security company, Big Dog Security. We provide services to Mitchell's Grocery Store, which is right down that corner. I think that's Councilman Small's area.
It is.
The issue is with lack of police presence that's down the area. My company works there from 3:00 to 11:00 at night. And during those hours, there's a lot of drug activity, a lot of shooting that's going on in the area, and there's a mini substation that's right across the street, where there's hardly ever any police that's there. If they do come out, most time it's for drug operations or only after shooting has taken place. And we were trying to find out if there's anything that the council could do, or Councilman Small could do to bring more police presence in that area. Because that was like, I think, two shootings within a week's time, just last week, where a young child was shot. And then the next two or three days, there was a gentleman that was trying to rob an individual, was shot three times in the chest.
We actually spoke about this during our pre-conference meeting, and the Admiral is not here, but he did mention that it used to be more of a precinct and now it's kind of a, I guess you would call it sort of a mini meeting place for some of our officers to check in and out. But Mr. Small did speak to that during our pre-conference meeting, so I'm going to turn to you, if you would, CJ.
Good morning. Good morning. I do agree with you 100% about having more police present in the area. I have in the past requested the administration, as far as the chief of police, to at least try to have a car along Arlington and Anne Street and also Baltimore Streets. Those are one of the worst streets in District 3. From my understanding, that we're on a shortage of policemen. Actually, we had an officer tell a community action group meeting last week about, which is only one officer present along South DIP. So it's not only at Arlington and Anne Street or Baltimore Street, I have across the district where we are short of policemen. So therefore, I have to really just look at the administration to see, you know, when or if they can, you know, give us more police protection in District 3. If I could tell a policeman to come at Arlington and Anne, I could, I would, but as violation of the rules of, of our government. So therefore, the police department or the policeman worked for the mayor and his administration. So that has to be a question to the administration.
Is that something that you could do?
Well, let, let me, we, we did speak to this briefly this morning about what is going on with that, where it used to be a police precinct. I don't know, Ricardo or you or the mayor want to address that?
Sure. What we'll do, and Admiral Landau was there this morning.
Right, he was.
We're going to check into that. I mean, we've got to relay that information to the chief, public safety director, and take a look at it. So it was discussed in the previous meeting. It is something that we're aware of as far as the site and what you're talking about. There are other parameters that we have to go through. So we'll, we'll be addressing that issue.
And I know that Mr. Small will stay in touch with you as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And give you any updates that, that he receives.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ordinance is held over 64021 rezoned property at 3901 Cottage Hill Road from R1 to B1.
Some move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over 40085 declare structure at 2760 Brookley Avenue. A public nuisance in order repaired or demolished.
Some move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21298, 299, and 300 are authorizing contracts with Kingdom Care Lawn Service for right-of-way mowing, best price services for right-of-way mowing.
Some moved.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37301 approve the application of Vince McCarron and Antoinette McCarron doing business as affordable home care for certificate of public convenience and necessity for shuttle service.
Some move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
21308 authorize contract with Eric's Lawn Care for right-of-way mowing.
Some moved.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 03309 through 58319.
Motion for suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolution 03309 through 58319.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03309 reappoint Delma Thrash to the Lab Peoples Memorial Stadium Public Park and Recreation Board.
Some move. Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
31310311 authorizing the mayor to apply, accept, and receive for and enter into an agreement of understanding with ALA HIDTA grant. No local matches on either. Some move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37312 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Wet Willys on Dolphin Street.
Some move.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37313314 recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine offering is his only license for first stop on Spring Hill Avenue and for lounge retail liquor class 2 package store license for first stop on Spring Hill Avenue.
Move to layover one week.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
4315 and 316 are declaring structures at 507 Dolphin Island Parkway and 665 Patton Avenue. A public nuisance in ordering them repaired or demolished.
Some move. Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
58317, 318, and 319 at TR Construction to the list of private contractors to abate properties declared public nuisances declaring weeds noxious group 1539 and assess cost removal of weeds group 1523.
Some move.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21320 and 321.
Motion for suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolution 21320 through 21321.
Second?
Hold on just a second here. That, the second one is fine. As I stated before, $50,000 or less on CIP projects. $50,000 or less on CIP projects, I'll, I'll grant consent. Otherwise, I thought it was understood, sorry. So the first one is?
Move or layover?
All right, we'll, we'll move to layover 21320 till next week, per council rules. And go ahead and vote then on 321.
Yep.
All right.
21, oh, right, okay. We got a second?
Yes.
21321 authorize contract with Southern Earth Sciences for rehabilitation and resurfacing of Pleasant Valley Road from Azalea Road to Montlemur Drive.
Some moved.
Second?
I think we already did that, but all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01322 through 21324.
My council rules those resolution would be laid over for one week.
Except for?
Well, except for?
01-322, resolution layover for two weeks.
Yes, we're going to lay that one over for two weeks.
So we'll vote on that one.
To make sure that Mr. Dave's is back so that he can attend the council meeting next Tuesday, and we'll hold our committee meeting next Tuesday as well.
Okay, so we'll vote on that one.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're gonna?
Yes. Move to layover for two weeks, resolution 01322.
Second?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
All right, Mr. Manzi? The Bel Air Mall because Joel won't be back in town until, what, next Tuesday? Because we, we've assigned this to committee and he was not going to be able to be back in town until... Pardon me? He will be here next Tuesday, yeah, but he won't be back in town to hold the committee meeting so that he could attend. And he's on the committee as well. Because CJ checked with him before the meeting, so that's why. All right, Mr. Manzi?
Yes, Madam President, I want to briefly announce we will be having a District 2 community meeting at the Dolphin Way United Methodist Church this Thursday at 6:00. And so those residents should have received a card notifying them of the meeting on Thursday at 6:00, Dolphin Way United Methodist Church. And we're asking that Mr. Nick Amberger, our city engineer, along with the other invited members of the administration staff, will be there. Again, it's Thursday at 6:00 at the Dolphin Way United Methodist Church. That'll be our final District 2 community meeting for this half of the year.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
All righty. The Public Service Committee will be meeting today at 2:00 in the council conference, conference room. We're going to be discussing the CIP projects for 2016 and beyond. The Crime Care Group will be meeting Monday, May 9th at the USA Medical Center Auditorium starting at 6:00. On Sunday, we had the youth orchestra, Mobile Youth Symphony Orchestra at the Trinity Gardens Park, Micaceous Amper Theater. I just want to say that they did an outstanding job, well-attended, even though we had rain out there. The people still came out in grand fashion. In fact, we have started a discussion on making that event an annual event and couple it with, with some local activity and just have a grand affair the next time. So we are discussing that now. The Tobinville Sidewalk program is doing good. They, they should finish up St. Stephen Road this week. And I'm waiting on them to get on Donald Street. It's going to be transformative to see those sidewalks on Donald Street that will connect Booker T. Washington Elementary School with LaFlore High School. That's going to be transformative, and they are working hard on that. And that's about all I have, Madam President.
Good grief. All righty. Short and sweet today. Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to announce to the community, especially those interested in the improvements at Medal of Honor Park and Playground Express. When the city retained a design consultant, the understanding that the, the initial amounts of money was not enough to actually do the full park in the sense that it didn't include benches or fencing or curbing sidewalks and things that you have to have within the playground structure. In meeting with Commissioner Hudson, she has agreed to allocate funds so we can keep going. And it's a significant amount of funds that will be added to the project. So I'd just like this community to be aware of that. It keeps the program moving, whereas we would have had to look at next year, and that would have been a real disappointment. So I want to personally thank her on behalf of the community for her support of sending county monies. Again, you'll hear more about it as we get into the contract itself. So I wanted to say that. And also, the next concert that will be out there, the Pops Concert, will be May 30th, which is a Monday evening, but it's Memorial Day and a lot of schools are already off. So we had a really great attendance at the last one, and I would hope that the administration may, and I don't know if it will be as big as the April concert was, but I, we had some concerns about getting people in and out of the footprint onto Hillcrest, especially for left turns. So there might want to be some consideration of the administration looking into that and also preparing the site for a large crowd, which we hope is out there, and also the help of the administration for advertising the concert, which is free to the general public and really a great event. Again, that will be at 7:00 PM, Memorial Day, May 30th, and it's a patriotic concert. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Small?
Thank you, Madam President. Greetings to the citizens of District 3. On next Tuesday, May 10th, the Economic, Culture, and Civic Development Committee will have a committee meeting on the ninth floor at 1:00 PM to discuss the economic development with Bel Air Mall. Again, this will be on next Tuesday, May 10th at 1:00 PM on the ninth floor, the council floor on the ninth floor. Also, to all the citizens of District 3 and all citizens of Mobile... Also, to all the citizens of District Three and all citizens of Mobile, if you have issues with overgrown grass, please dial three-one-one. I do not mind for you calling me, nor even my colleagues on the council, but once you call us, we still have to turn back around and call three-one-one. Yes, the council members have to call three-one-one. So to make that process a little bit shorter, please dial three-one-one if you come across any overgrown grass. We know we have been experiencing a lot of rain in the city in the last couple of days, and the sun is coming out, and grass will be growing because it's springtime going into the summer, so therefore, we will be having these issues across the city, but encouraging all the citizens to please dial three-one-one for any city issues such as overgrown grass or blockaded properties. And I encourage the citizens also to, even when you drive around, if you see a blockaded piece of property, or overgrown grass, just pick up the phone, just dial three-one-one, and once you call three-one-one, please get a SRO number, which stands for Survey Requests order number, and that will help keep track of your problem or the issue that you have. Then, again, citizens, please dial three-one-one, and remember that District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Just a quick trip report. Mayor talked a little bit about us going to Washington DC. What an opportunity. First of all, this is only the sixth trip that I've taken in over eight years, and I think it is one of the most successful, one that had objectives, two of which were, one, to compare our presentation relative to cities our size and cities we would like to be like. In looking at that objective, we are not where we need to be. We are a city now that has almost a thousand rooms that can be blocked and presented as a package to a convention or meeting that is looking for a place to land. That puts us in a whole different level of competition, and we either need to recognize that and address it, or we need to dismiss the fact that we are going to move further in that visitor or meeting industry. I think we need to meet the objective. It won't take a lot of money, and I know that the mayor is going to be talking about that in the near future, and I hope that we can find a way to support that. Second thing was to go to one place and meet a number of meeting planners that could affect us being able to move into this new era of meeting and convention business. We met with multiples, but Friday presented its best opportunity, where we hosted a luncheon that had, I'd say, twenty-five or thirty meeting planners, that they alone, most of them, had three or four, if not more, organizations that they represented. Highly successful meeting on Friday, and our visit to the floor resulted in a couple of meetings being at least considered for Mobile. Mission objectives met, but mission complete is yet to be. We've got some work to do. I applaud Al and his team for all that they have done. Visit Mobile, born to celebrate, was well-received, this new brand. People are excited about it. It really shows up on the floor, and is going to be something I think we can work with to move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Alright, and Mrs. Rich has one more announcement.
This is very forgetful of me, but I want to wish everyone a very happy Mother's Day. I know it was mentioned in the concert as something that people should consider, but again, just I hope everyone has wonderful memories that are made on Mother's Day, and thanks to all the moms that keep our city going in the right direction. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Just a couple of things from District Seven. Councilman Dave's and I helped the Village of Spring Hill celebrate their ten-year anniversary this past week. The final part of the celebration was the annual Sidewalk-a-thon, where the kids go out and raise money, and then we all walk on the sidewalks and have a movie and fireworks and lots of games and things at the end of the walk, so it was very well-received, a great turnout this year. Last year it rained, so this year the weather held up for us, and just a really fabulous turnout, and helping to raise money for the next leg of sidewalks that are to be built in that area. This morning, I saw community service workers out picking up litter along Ziegler Boulevard. That's something I've been talking to Judge Witten and some of the other judges about, trying to make sure that litter is picked up. Of course, City of Mobile doesn't have crews enough to go out and pick up litter all over the city, so if there's a way to work with our courts in order to get inmates out or community service workers out picking up litter, that's something that I know the judges are looking at doing, to try to help us out and keep our city looking good, and I just want to congratulate whoever was responsible for that, because I have been complaining about it now for months, and it looks like somebody heard. With that in mind, if there's anything else from any of the council members, any other announcements? Anybody? Mr. Manzi?
Yes, I would be remiss if I didn't. My mother watches this program weekly.
You better tell her.
And so, Mom, I want to wish you a happy Mother's Day, and there will be a Mother's Day concert in Washington Square from two to four, if I'm not mistaken, on Sunday, so citizens are certainly welcome to come on. I plan on going out for a while, and hopefully we'll get her to go with me, and want to certainly wish her a happy Mother's Day.
Sounds great. Alright.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Small?
I can't let this go by either. I have plenty of play-play moms out there, especially since I've been on council, many had adopted me and called me their son, so I'd like to wish every one of them a happy Mother's Day, and my own biological mother, happy Mother's Day.
Yeah, exactly. Alright. Thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.[1795.76]